I got the message.
Thank you, Jim. Seven and we'll go through. Yep, I'm calling the meeting to order today, Tuesday, December sixth at seven P. M. Roll call Jimmy Tarlo.
Yeah.
Valerie Woodall.
Here.
Luke Cheswick.
Here.
And Council member Stopes has requested an excuse today. He didn't form the rest of council myself, and so he's excuse for today and myself. So we have quorum for for one. Okay, so when we tonight, because our vice mayor is not on, Jimmy Tarlo will serve as vice mayor. All right, so Jimmy, can you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jimmy. So moving on to item number two, review of the agenda, this supposed to be five minutes. Mayor and council review the agenda for the meeting, adding or deleting topics of interest of discussion. So go ahead, Jimmy.
Melissa, I hope you roll with me. Call one is called for honorable agents, two is review of the agenda. Three is a mayor and council member and event announcement. Four, city management report. Five is public comment. Six is presentation on a city's first quarter fiscal year twenty three financial report. All business first reading rental stabilization ordinance. Discussion vote on selection of contractor for pots hall. Discussion appointment to the police advisory board. Second reading and adoption. A proposed budget calendar for fiscal year twenty twenty four. A new business discussion on proposal for purchasing new vehicles for the police department. Discussion vote on the holiday bonus to city staff. Vote on approval of minutes and hopefully adjournment. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. I'll read the announcements when it's my turn, Melissa, Melissa, no worries. Okay, so thank you so much to council, anything to add to the lead of this list? Melissa, the resiliency session was on the list, right? I didn't miss it?
Yes, it's there.
Okay, thank you. Can you can you resend all of us the package once again? Because I mean, I dig for it and I couldn't find it. I had to go to the calendar for the for the link. All right, perfect. So I'm gonna go open up the council, anything, or we're good with this agenda as is?
Good.
Luke? I'm assuming silence means yes.
Yeah, sorry, I was giving the thumbs up. Good.
Right. Okay, Valerie, we're good. All right, perfect. So moving on to the next next item, item number three, council members events and announcements. Luke, since you have the mic, go ahead. We'll start with you, followed by Jimmy, then Valerie.
Um, I have just a couple of things. I know that a lot of folks have emailed me about when we're gonna go out with the native plant network certification this year. There's been a little bit of delay in just getting that up and running with the green team focusing on some other stuff. So we'll try to get our act together, but it could be a winner certification this year. Just until we get some stuff in order. The system we had to kind of automate certification. The person we had who helped us with that, we're just gonna try to reach out to them and see if we can get that up again to make it easier for everyone. Sierra Club meets the the fourth Thursday of every month to talk about building a native plant wildlife quarter across the state. So I'm leading that that subgroup. So email me if you're interested in joining Lchessic at Mount Rainier M D dot org. And that's it for me, because I know mayor has a lot of fun stuff she's gonna announce for events in December. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Jimmy.
I'll pass you mayor to Valerie.
No third team information, Jimmy?
We do a lot of stuff on the server, so we'll put the announcements out there.
Perfect, Valerie?
Um, I think the main things for the recreation committee is the they have the holiday family outreach event at the nature center. And I think you have to be paired up with families to get that. But then the parade of lights is Saturday, December seventeenth at six P. M. and onwards. So that's a really fun community event that the recreation committee puts on. So hopefully you'll be able to participate in that. So I think that's it for me.
Thank you. And also, I know Roots and Shoots gave a big donations from the neighbors. Can you talk a little bit about that? Because it was very impressive.
Um, yeah, so Roots and Shoots reform. This is not part of well, it's it's it was a for it was a group formed by a number of neighborhood families. That is for children. It's like a Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts kind of thing without all the, you know, fundraising and patches and all that. It's basically around studying your world and and service. And so the Roots and Shoots group met before Thanksgiving to let people know about the city food drive. And then they and then they they said they would come back on December fourth and pick up the food that people would leave out for the food drive if they would do that. And so on Sunday, December fourth, we went around and collected about three hundred and fifty items for the food drive and dropped it off at the city hall. And also let families in the area know that they could drop things off until December fifteenth. So that was a very successful event that just concluded. If you have questions about Roots and Shoots as a as a group, just feel free to email me at Valerie Woodall at gmail dot com or or my council email can work as well.
Thank you so much, and we'll be sending thank yous also to the collective, because definitely they were out there like raising awareness and it was very successful. All right, perfect. Thank you, thank you, Melissa. All right, so you heard a couple of the events out from the committee, from the green team. Right, so let me get through the other ones. So breakfast with Santa is gonna be taking place this Saturday from ten to twelve noon at the nature center. We have had more people sign up to this event than in previous years. The team did an outstanding outreach with the baskets. They provided the information now so that what people will also be made aware. So there was a lot of fires in the community and a lot of posts through social media. So we were able to get the families made aware that this has been happening. But right now we have two hundred and fifty kids register this that's without counting the adults. So this is definitely one of the bigger ones that we've had. So from ten to twelve at the nature center. So we're asking everybody that that sign up to show up in in order to like, you know, make sure they'll take they'll get an art craft picture with Santa, a toy and and a bit of breakfast to go. In order to make sure we're still keeping a little bit of a social social distance. So that's it, the registration has closed. I know I've been getting a lot of emails from not just Mount Rainier, but all over, all over the state. And I had to like, you know, tell them like, unfortunately, this is just for Mount Rainier. And I direct them to other cities and the staff also did the same thing. They emailed all the residents to let them know to reach out to their city hall. And I did a where made a couple of mirrors aware that we is is something that community really wants. So if they want to do something in their city, they're welcome to do it. All right, the holiday family outreach already heard from that that's December tenth, six to nine. Both schools submitted the list. They have host parents, host families that are helping us a very nice, beautiful event. Holiday basket distribution, that'll be December sixteen, twelve noon to six P. M. At the police station. If you want to volunteer, we will take volunteers from seven A. M. All the way to six thirty P. M. On the sixteen. On the four on the Tuesday before, we are gonna I'm gonna be there from four to about six. And the Wednesday before about four to whatever we're done. I know in the past, the last basket distribution, big thank you to the explorers, Mount Rainier explorers. They helped us out. We managed to do seventy five percent of that non perishable package packaging. And that last to have like Thursday off and a lot of volunteers. Thank you so much for coming and spending the whole day. We are working in collaboration. We're getting lists from Mount Rainier Elementary, Thomas Stone, Cesar Chavez, and the senior center. In addition to everybody that's signing up through our social media. Let me see the prior lives, you know, December eighteen from sixty nine. I am having a cider station at my house, so you're welcome to come by and stop by. And there is a Christmas holiday in December twenty sixth, the office will be closed. For the visit for Santa driving around the fire truck, that's to be determined. They are gonna be posted it out on the fire department website. So the minute they post it, we'll make sure we share. And last but not least, I am very, very happy and humbled to have been selected as far as the transition team for Brooke Lerman, our controller elect. We already we already held our first meeting and we have a couple more meetings to attend. But if you have any ideas when it comes to the controller's office, please reach out. We definitely want to hear from you, not just you, but Brooke and the transition team team. So Mayor Benitez, Mount Rainier M D dot org. For fourth graders, if I were a mayor for a day essay contest, it's gonna be sent to your school. And I am gonna be visiting Thomas on Mount Rainier Elementary, Cesar Chavez, fourth graders to encourage them to write. If I were a mayor, it's being hosted by Maryland Municipal League and the mayor's association. Both were both of them were part of, and I am one of the readers this year as well. So usually when I go, I talk to them about government, about the question and give them information about what to focus and to write. And the scholarship information questions, they're being already been submitted and they're gonna be going to the schools this week. So be on the lookout for the scholarship information for you to apply. And we're gonna be doing a lot of extra publicity on it. So the school should be receiving them and and good luck to everybody that applies. And this will be our fifth year with with the scholarships. And the end of like early, early approval recommendations letters have ended. I was able to write at least twenty letters of recommendations of various levels, even PhD level students. Some of them are scholarship students are now applying for doctor degrees. So it's really exciting to see that the them growing from kids going out of high school, right? Now applying for PhDs, you know, so it's exciting all around. So we'll be able to meet a couple of them next year, because it is our five year reunion. And we'll just meet like a field of former and whoever the new group is in order to build a little bit of camaraderie and mentorship. All right, so those are my announcements. And I'm pretty sure there's others that left, just go through the social media. I was present at county executive in the county council as swearing in ceremony yesterday. I'll be present at the controllers swearing in and the governor elect. And lieutenant government elect as well, so and then we have been, you know, invited and we'll be there and looking forward to sharing other great news in January. So thank you to the county executive, they invited all the mayors to be present. So you know, they we represented our cities at the event. All right, that's it for me. All right, so we'll move moving on to the city manager's report. The city manager will present his report to Baron Council. And there's not located time on this one, but we are gonna put the same as as the other ones. Mr. Kamali, ten minutes and open up the other ten for questions and answers. Okay, go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. And hello, the resident of Mount Rainier. So I have another report for this month, which I have a good news. Finally, we could finish the audits. So which what I mean by audits, when I became the city manager, FY twenty audit, FY twenty one was not completed. So we finished this one twenty in January and twenty one and twenty two simultaneously in November. So now the city after seven years, we got the city on the right track. And we're looking to future FY twenty three to make sure that everything is going to be done at the right time. So I appreciate my team and everybody that donated time and information to have this one completed. That's regarding the audit. So audit FY twenty two report has been sent to the Maryland Department of Legislative Services. And so we're good, we're good to go. Next, we have the street and sidewalk study as the mayor and council know that we received the existing condition last week. Which the tool design is expecting the mayor and council and the city to review it. So we're in process of reviewing this. And hopefully this project will be completed by next March. Then we can apply for some federal grants and we should be at the good shape. Next one, I got the pot salt. So pot salt is gonna be in the agenda for tonight. Right now I am working with the city attorney and the contractors and architects to have a contract for phase one for three million. Fund that is available. And so hopefully by end of this week, if mayor and council vote on it tonight, we will have the contract executed. And hopefully sometimes in January, we're gonna start the project if everything goes well. Next item I have in my report is Memorial Park project. So Memorial Park project right now, which is last week, last week we paid seventy six hundred dollars for the permit fee. This is only fifty percent of the fee. So Deepai is reviewing our drawings and we're waiting for them to provide us with their comments. Once LID receive the comments, we can send the, you know, comments back. And then we get some feeling when we're gonna have the permit in order to start this project as soon as possible. Next item, we have thirty first Street, which is the Green Street. This one is almost in the seventy five percent design. And hopefully, the design will be competed completed in January twenty three. This one, I'm sorry, it says twenty two, but I meant twenty three. And I got it, so I'm sorry. So that should be January twenty three next year. And that once they finish ninety percent the design, the city will get a copy. We will share it with the mayor and council, and we may have a presentation for the mayor and council at that time. Next item, I got ARPA funding. ARPA is moving. Pretty good. Right now we have the rental utility assistant program. We finished round one and we're going round two. Round two deadline is December seventeen. And we may have round three. It depends on the budget that we have. So far we have spent thirty one thousand dollars. And hopefully we will have some money to go to the next round. And in our part section also, we have the outdoor classrooms that Mount Rainier Elementary School PTO and Thomas Stone PTO are working on it. And the first report is being given to the city. So we should be good with that project at this point. And the next item is the Newton Street, the Green Street. The the mayor and council allocated nine hundred eighty thousand dollars for that project. Right now we are at the beginning of the design, the concept plan. And we have a twenty four inch pipe over there that runs from Newton all the way to Otis. So we're investigating that twenty four inches pipe, which was required by the county. And right now we're getting some information. Hopefully we don't have to do that much on that pipe. And so the next item I have Rhode Island Avenue facade improvement. That one is ongoing right now. As everybody can see it on Rhode Island Avenue, we have some new improvements, facade improvements. And we're so happy with the contractor and they're doing a good job. And the last, but not least, is the staff departure or staff new hires. Unfortunately, the city, we're having a hard time to fill those vacancies. We have two police officers, vacancy in police department. We have a code inspector with code compliance. And we have a labor position open with Public Works. And we've been trying so hard, unfortunately, we have not succeeded yet. So I do appreciate your time. If you guys have any question for me, I'll be glad to respond. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're gonna go Jimmy, Luke, Valerie.
I don't have any questions. Thank you, Mr. Kamali.
Thank you, Jimmy, Luke.
Yeah, I think I have three questions. The first is on the Memorial Park project. I just think and Mr. Kamali, I think I said this in an email in response to your your bi weekly check in. Just make sure that, you know, our grant, our granters are updated as much as possible. I think that to the extent there's a delay in any construction, the fact that we've already submitted so much money in fees to Deepai. The fact that the process is obviously starting is sort of good faith that this is moving forward. And also revisit maybe what we what we said we would seek reimbursement for to see if the budget has to change at all that we submitted to the grantors or not. That could be something that you'd want to work on with with both Maryland Historic Trust and DHCD on that one. And then the second one would be on the Newton Street project. I think that one thing that I want to make sure we address in the plan is that the sidewalks on Newton Street are in really rough shape. Especially on the that be the western side of the street. So just want to make sure that I know that the stormwater.
Outside.
Or for the. It's outside, yeah. I think both of those sidewalks, just take a look at them and make sure the sidewalk sidewalk improvements are included in this. In this piece, because I think that's that's really important. And there was, I think, maybe a third one, if you scroll up and it'll come to me. Melissa, thank you. What was it? Oh, on the comprehensive street and sidewalk study. I I know you had emailed us for some feedback. And I just, I want to make sure, I I know that tool design is scheduled, I think, to have two more meetings with the city with with the mayor and council. I just, I just want to get others read from my colleagues here about whether there is a time and place before March, before we have the final version. To sort of do another outreach with the community, another just, you know, meet, you know, one big community meeting. This is kind of where we're heading so that residents get a chance to react before we sign off. Maybe that is March, I don't know. I just, I've been getting emails about about what is is there more community input coming? And I'm, I would like there to be, and I would like there to be something for residents to react to. So, you know, them to say, this is what we heard, this is where we're heading and get the feedback from residents before we have a final plan. That's my thought there for for feedback from from others.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, Luke, Valerie.
Um, thank you, and thank you. Good job on the getting the audit done. You know, that was a lot of work and it's a big undertaking to do two audits in the same kind of six month period. So good job on that. I did have a question. I don't see anything on Spring Park here. I don't know if that's something that you're working on. That's one question. And then I know there was a pot salt. I think there should be another bullet under it talking about the reimbursement that you got through your new grants manager. And so I think that would be something to add to your report to make sure that we're keeping up to date, that certain things are, you know, being emailed, but they're not necessarily being put onto this update. So I think those, that's my my two things, so.
Thank you, Valerie. Can you go up in the report, Melissa? Thank you. Great job with the with the audit for the whole entire team. I know this is labor love. I remember when Kevin Greenville like first gave us the information of like even ten years prior to that. It was a lot. And so I feel like everybody's been chipping on it, chipping on it, and finally is getting where we need to be. So big, big shout out to all the all the people that have been working on it to get us where we're at. That definitely has 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 helped from where we were a few years back. All right, so for Memorial Park, Mr. Kamali, can you make sure you put the deadlines on Memorial Park? Because I know they're next year. I want to make sure that we have them like in plain sight. When it comes to whether, you know, the grant needs to be like, it's requesting for us to complete this project. So that we're fully visual of what it looks like. Okay, um, for pasta, yeah, go ahead and put the extra amount that that was there. But also, um, the that extra funding that was received on it. Go up a little bit more to the next one. For, let me see, there you go. Keep going a little bit more. Yeah, for the outdoor classroom, can you please make sure we have a component with where the kids are also giving their feedback? I want to make sure they also have a stay on it, because if we're building all of this to be kid focused, I want to make sure they also have a stay on it as well. And with this meeting with administration, let's make sure the PTOs are also involved in the meetings, because they are the the recipients of the funds. I don't see their name on it. If if they are being part of this meeting, because it says new school administration, make sure that it's also adding to the PTOs were part of it. If that's the case, if not, just make sure they are, because I don't want them to start feeding excluded on something that they have the funding for. For the Newton Street, as we get closer to it, we need to schedule a community meeting so that we go talk to them. As we have before, I know me and Luke had done that very, very well, when we go talk to the residents over there in in that area and talk to them directly. Not just have them come to a meeting here, but go to the block itself and and call upon them. So you definitely could work with with us on making sure the meeting happens. And when it comes to the outreach, so that way they know. And when it comes to the outreach, so that way they know, um, what we're looking at and what changes. Yeah, both those sidewalks are really bad. So if we're gonna fix it, that needs to take place. If not, um, you're gonna just have water, water rolling through and it's not walkable at this point. It's really bad. All right, let me see. Rhode Island, um, yeah, this, this definitely, uh, this weather's definitely not helping to have, and they have done so much. There was also discussion about, um, what's going on with Aladdin Sizzler. Right now, like they're working with their insurance regarding the fire that happened. So that's on hold for right now, as they continue doing the other items and they're getting permits for, for signs and everything else. Let me see, um, yeah, first, yeah, there, I wanna make sure people are aware that they, they are constantly, um, they're constantly trying to recruit, so it's, it's not like just sitting around waiting for it. So at least those are a couple of mine. Uh, make sure that Memorial Park does, um, have a little bit more concern, because I think we had, we had the last extension due for next year. So I wanna make sure we all are very aware then. Can you also add to this list, Mr. Kamali, the library? Because I know your team is working also on trying to get the, the, uh, some money refunded from a grant.
On the list.
Be important as well, so that we, we, we have it there. Um, all right, Mr. Kamali, go ahead.
Yeah, so let me just, you know, respond to some of the comments that was made by the council. So going with, starting with Luke. Luke, I just wanna let you know that both of the grants are in a good shape, MHAA. We just found out today that we have received fifty thousand in January twenty-one, when Latasha was executing that contract. So right now, we have fifty thousand of a signed bill by Stricki, and he's in communication with Andrew. Andrew said, we don't need to do anything. And I have Mr. Hopkins, you know, taking care of DHCD. And his next quarterly report is due next month. And we're good with that one. So at this point, I'm very confident about that. And going back to Newton Street, yes, both of the sidewalks on the north and south are included, and we're gonna use FlexiPay. That was a part of the, the proposal. And I think that was it for you, and I'm going to respond to Valerie regarding the Spring Park. The Spring Park was discussed last time that you were not part of the meeting. And Rocio, uh, Director of Public Works, gave a full information to mayor and council. So right now, we are in the process of finding a consultant to do the, some study on the well. Unfortunately, she has not been able to do anything at that point. And, uh, and I appreciate that. That hundred thousand dollars was reimbursed last month on November twenty-one for the, for the POTS Hall reimbursement. And that's it. I think, uh, next, Mayor, I just wanna bring to your attention the ARPA. We did not have that meeting. That meeting was between PTO. And they were part of that meeting. So that meeting that took with the ARPA consultant and the PTO. So what we are trying to say that they were a part of that meeting. And then, once we go to the library, the library is still there. We're waiting for, for Alex Tooks. And she promised that we're gonna get something, and Bill is working on it. And Newton Street, definitely, we're gonna have that community conversation. But we are right now at the beginning of the project. So, uh, we have to determine the status of the pipe, and then later on, I will share the information with mayor and council and get the direction from you guys. And
Kamali, I think what Valerie and I, and me are asking is for Spring Park to be added permanently part of the report and the library to be added permanently part of the report, whether she was in the meeting is this. So
I understand what you're saying, Mayor. The library is always part of the report. If you go to the POTS Hall, you see a library reimbursement. We are still waiting for Alex Tooks. And I will, I will get that one in Spring Park into that report for the next two weeks. Definitely, I'll do that.
Yeah, just make it into its own bullet point, Mr. Kamali, because I know like, once POTS Hall advanced, you're gonna have to fill in more stuff, so it gets lost.
I'll, I'll separate that. I'll separate that.
So council, uh, anything else to add? Let me know, and I'll call upon you before I open this up. So, um, I just need to hear your name. Um, we're gonna start with Valerie. Anything, anything else? So you're good?
Um, no, I think, um, the only thing that you missed, Mr. Kamali, was Luke's, um, um, part about the street and sidewalk study. And I think that's a, you know, kind of an urgent thing that we're
Oh, okay. Yeah. Definitely, I've talked to them and Tool Design has offered, and you know, number of the community, if the city is willing to pay for it. Cuz that was, you know, not part of the agreement. So we can, we can place any, anytime you guys wish to have that one. Definitely, I can, I can coordinate that with them.
Yeah, thank you. I think, I think that would be good, um, that would be good. Um, let's see what they come up with first. In the first meeting and see how it goes.
All right, we'll do that.
Okay, Jimmy.
I'm fine. We have a long meeting. Let's move ahead.
Luke.
I would just say, on the, uh, street and sidewalk study, I would say, my recommendation, if everyone's okay with it, would be telling them, yes, we wanna move forward. Tell us when you think you will have a good plan that we can get a reaction from. Um, and then schedule it ASAP after that. We can work our schedules around that. Thanks.
Agree. Okay, um, so, Mr. Kamali, the other one, yeah, it wasn't clear to me, so I'm gonna read back the report when it came to, because it made it sound like you guys had the meeting with the administration. I will go ahead and talk to them, if that could be clarified a little bit, but the other thing is like, I need to make sure that there's also student involvement in that. Thank you so much. All right, um, any member of the community has any questions regarding this point, let us know now. If not, we're moving on to the next item. Type your name, um, name, last name on the chat. And we'll call upon you. I see nothing. Anything on Facebook? Jared? I know there's only one of you now, so if it sounds like it. We'll work on it. All right, thank you so much. And nothing on the chat as well. Thank you for the report, Mr. Kamali. All right, so moving on to the next item, uh, public comment. During this time, the public is welcome to make a comment. You have three minutes to speak. If you're representing a group, everybody in that group sees their time to you, and you need to be recognized by that group that you, that you're authorized to speak on behalf of them. You have five minutes. If there's something on the agenda, they'll be addressed in the agenda. We ask that you please address it during, during the agenda. And if not, if you cannot state a pass, um, go ahead and address it. But, um, it's easier for us not to like address it twice in order to move on with the, with the meeting. Saying that, if we have a member of the public who wishes to make a comment, please type your name, last name, um, block and street number on the chat, and we'll go ahead and call upon you. And same thing, um, for Facebook, just, you know, same thing, and just, um, ask your question. Jared will go ahead and like, um, copy and paste it into the chat, that's what he's done in the past. Okay, I'm, I'm not even seeing movement on it, so. Okay, so we'll move on to the next, um, we'll move on, we'll move on to the next item. Right, as point number six, presentation on the city, oh my goodness. City's first quarterly FY twenty-three financial results, twenty-five minutes. Mayor and council will receive a presentation from finance consultant. Ron Wilson, oh, they put your full name, Ron, Ronald Wilson, and the city's first quarter FY twenty-three financial results. Sorry, guys, like the light is like killing my eyes right now. Okay, um, Ron, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, um, and Council. I believe that you all received this financial report in advance. So I'm not gonna go line by line. I am gonna highlight what I think are some important areas. And then we'll open it up for any questions that you might have, whether they're, um, broad questions or detailed questions. The first quarter of the fiscal year is always our lowest revenue quarter. Some significant pieces of revenue, like the real property tax and the shared state income tax are very seasonal, and they come in later in the year. About sixty percent of the real property tax, uh, comes in in October. So we, we got three million dollars in the bank in October, but that doesn't show up on this first quarter report. You will see that when, when I present the second quarter report in January. Likewise, the shared state income tax, that's item forty-one oh eight, the bulk of that comes in in January. So you won't even see that on the second quarter report. Uh, you'll see the bulk of that in the third quarter report. And then also, the business personal property tax, uh, comes in, in the fourth quarter of the year. So bottom line, uh, it is that, uh, well, let me back up. One thing that was running above budget, uh, for the first quarter was the speed camera revenue. Melissa, if you can scroll down a little bit. A little bit more. Okay, item forty-five oh six. Uh, we budgeted seven fifty for the year. Um, and in the first quarter, we brought in two hundred and fifteen. That's right about twenty-eight thousand dollars higher than the first quarter's budget. And if we kept up that pace, we, we would bring in about eight hundred and sixteen, I'm sorry, eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars by the end of the year. We'll monitor it. We'll see how it goes, and when we get deeper into the year, we can evaluate, uh, how we think we're gonna finish up there. So Melissa, if you can scroll to the next page. So for the first, first quarter, um, we brought in a million, just under a million three in revenue. Like I said, this is our lightest, um, quarter for revenue. And because of that, uh, Melissa, if you'd scroll to the last page. Because of that light revenue in the first quarter, we actually had a deficit, uh, for the first quarter. This is not unusual, uh, it's not a surprise, uh, and it's not a cause for worry. Because we know that we have big, uh, spikes in revenue that will be coming in the second and third quarter. And, um, we, we have no reason to think at this point that we will have a problem with our budget. Couple of, um, things that, uh, I wanna point out that might not be obvious from this report. We make the annual pension contribution for the employees once a year. We're budgeted for a little bit more than three hundred thousand dollars for that cost. And that payment will be made, uh, either real late in December or early in January. It's calculated and paid for a calendar year, uh, all at one time. Secondly, we have a debt service cost for this year that we did not budget for. And that's the two million dollar borrowing that is set aside for the POTS Hall redevelopment. Our first semi-annual payment on that bond, uh, will, will be due, um, early next calendar year. And that will be a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. So, uh, we will, at, at a future date, we will need to execute a, a budget modification for that, because that was unplanned and unbudgeted. Next year, just thinking ahead, we, we'll have to fit in another two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars of debt service into next year's budget. So just keep that in mind. So, um, overall, uh, it's way too early to predict how the year will end up. But, um, in looking at the expenses, we don't see any surprises right now. There, there are no expense items that are significantly above budget in dollar terms. So, um, except for that unbudgeted debt service, we, at this point, don't have anything to worry about. Well, we'll have a much better idea of what the year will look like, once we once we get into January.
Please mute your mics.
Okay, so, um, I will, um, open it up for questions.
Okay, thank you, Ron, for your presentation. I open it up for questions. Uh, Valerie, you have the floor?
Thank you. I think, um, this is all pretty straightforward. I do know that, um, a few of the events came very quick, that we've already done, have come all the way up to their budgeted line. And then events like the Halloween event, it's only sixty-seven dollars that was spent. So, um, you know, I just, I just wonder, um, and, and the recreation committee, I think they have spent some money, but it's a zero in the budget. So I'm not sure if we're putting them in different places. But, um, I think the other comment, the only other comment I would have is that, if we, I know it's in order of number, but it might be helpful to break out like by, um, by items, you know, um, like events. And then have the events listed underneath, just so we can see what we're doing in events versus like association dues, for example. But, um, this is, this is pretty straightforward, and thank you for presenting this.
Yeah, we're, we're always looking to, um, improve, uh, the information that gets to the city council. So if there's anything in particular that, that you would like to request of the finance department, just send me an email, you know, but, but there, there are, there are lots of pieces of information behind this financial report. And in many cases, we can put some things together relatively quickly and easily. So it just sends us whatever you're looking for.
Good, thank you.
So I think it's, um, Valerie, because it ends on September thirty, and the Halloween was in October. But I'll tell you this, cuz it was definitely not fifty-six dollars spent on Halloween. I think it was like, September thirty, like probably like a little purchase, like somebody like thought to, to get the, the process started. Okay, thank you so much. Um, uh, we're gonna go Luke then, Jimmy?
I just wanted to say thank you, Ron, for everything you're doing for the city, um, when it comes to finances, not just here, but with the audits. And, um, really appreciate you, um, and, uh, really appreciate getting these reports, and I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Jimmy?
Yeah, no, thank you. Same thing. I would just ask that maybe those items that are zeroed out and we're not using anymore, maybe we should couldn't possibly take them out of the, uh, the items, and how you do that, whether you can do that in next year's budget.
Yeah, yeah, certainly. Uh, I can make these inactive. And if there's
Bus shelter rev, advertising, you know, is, if there's always something that we put in the budget, we don't really need it on these, these reports. Makes it, you know, less garbage to read. But thank you very much. It's very helpful.
Yeah, sure. That, that's, that's an easy change to make.
It makes it a little bit smoother to read. Uh, so thank you, Ron. How, um, I know some other people in the community have not seen you, because you've been working for the city for quite a bit now. Let them know a, a little bit about how long have you been working for the city now?
Sure, um, yeah, I, I mean, I can give you the two-minute, um, history. I, uh, I graduated with an accounting degree back in nineteen eighty-three. That, uh, passed my CPA exam, spent a couple of, uh, tours in public accounting. Did, um, private side of accounting, uh, including municipal work. For the last fifteen years or so, I have had a, a, um, a practice as an outsourced CFO. I originally started working with the city in the spring of two thousand and nineteen to help the, uh, the, the finance director at that time, uh, to catch up on, uh, some audits that, that were a few years, uh, behind at that point. So off and on, um, you know, there've been some hiatuses in there, but off and on, I've been working with the city since, uh, the spring of two thousand and nineteen. And then this past spring, um, I was engaged by the city to, um, actually run the finance department, uh, on an outsourced basis. Um, I have a team uh that works with me, uh, plus the city has um one full-time employee still uh in the finance department on the payroll. Uh, and we started that arrangement in May uh of twenty twenty-two. And uh, we've accomplished a lot in the last six months and uh we're looking to accomplish a lot more.
Thank you for the quick recap. I say it because I know that people hadn't realized that you've been with us since twenty nineteen. It's just like you were doing audits.
Right.
I hadn't seen you, seen you. Uh, you were definitely, that, that's what I did mention, like it's been li- many years of, of labor. I know you, you helped like set up some of these things to be put in motion a- along with other people. But yeah, I think what has helped is like overall, you have been one of the consistent uh people in finance to like link a lot of things together. So definitely appreciate the work that you're doing currently, but also the work that you've been doing for the past years. I, I want to make sure you, you are um, we acknowledge you for that work as well, because I know when you came in, it was um, it's taken a lot of, a lot of labor, a lot of labor of love. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
So I'm, I'm, I'm good. I did get it. Um, console the audit uh book. It is in your mailboxes. Uh, they, the staff has it there, so if you haven't had a chance to pick it up, please stop by and pick it up. Um, and um, you know, the, the team is going to be working on the, on the next ending period. Um, and uh, Ron, can you let us know as soon as possible when you guys, Kamali, you guys can start preparing the next uh budget amendment, because it takes about a month and a half-ish to make sure we met the deadline to pay um the, the fee for Potts Hall, okay? And what is needed. So I'm gonna open it up right now. I do have one resident that has a question. Uh, Chevali, would you like me to ask it? Or, or do you want to ask it? The floor is yours. And you're mute. I could ask it. It says wire meter, wire meter violations as zero. Go ahead, Ron.
Yeah, um, that uh, Melissa, would you scroll down? Let's see. Hold on. Stop. Yeah, I, um, we, we do have parking violations and we have meter violations. It's item forty-five hundred and forty-five oh one. Um, we, we just, uh, and Kamala, you can correct me if I'm wrong. We, we just entered into a new arrangement with the vendor to collect these for us and we're in startup mode. Is that correct?
Exactly. And also regarding the meter violation, we have some um, money that is deposited with chief in the police department, because we are in a negotiation with the bank, because tourist bank is not accepting the cones, coins right now. So we're trying to somehow uh find the vendor to transfer it to the bank. So we do have some money, but also we have a new vendor in this case. But in the next quarter, you go, you will see the information in the second quarter report.
Okay, thank you so much. Is there anybody else that has a question? Um, and uh to acknowledge, uh Gloria Carmen Wilmer Rosemary. Um, I do see your comment and once number seven is around, I will call upon you, okay? And uh, Trent so much, thank you so much for translating. All right, perfect. Um, any, anything on Facebook? Yeah, and just to um, to let people know, July, August, September, that's the first quarter. Um, once June thirty, um, ends and July first starts, that's when the new budget um is set. Okay? This is a bit of information. So that's the reason why. So that the numbers you see, the reason why you see the red goes, because as people are paying like, you know, their taxes and stuff like that, we're, we're getting the part that is part of the city. Um, that, that's the reason why. Okay? So it's four quarters and they come in as they go. The second, the money for the second quarter, I believe, already came in. I think I sent you guys something in today. But for this report, it's only until September thirty. All right, perfect. Thank you guys so much. Um, Melissa, to the agenda, please. Okay. Moving on to um all business. First reading of ordinance ten dash twenty twenty-two rent stabilization. Uh, Mayor Council will have the first reading of ordinance uh number ten twenty twenty-two rent stabilization. So I did share you guys a draft of, of this, because part of like moving along with it is also making sure that um, that we um start with the process. So from here, we'll be going to the work session on December ten. And then once we know what we want from there, moving it on uh to the next step. Uh, Legal Day gave us some advice and um I will be sending you guys more documents. Um, because there are exceptions here that should be able to cover some of the concerns as well. So I'm gonna go ahead and um, as much as I love reading, read through, and we do have a couple um of residents. Um, they're also here to speak on that point. We also have um uh PGCYD uh president, Martin Mitchell, who's also here. Hello, uh council member. Um, and we're president. All right, so. Um, wow, this is small. Can you make it a little bit bigger, Melissa? Thank you, Melissa. I'm gonna go blind, like reading this tiny letters. All right. Says in order to retain, um, and we borrow this from, from Laurel as well. Uh, so it says in order to retain or find equity rental housing, many residents of the city of Mount Rainier pay substantial amounts of their monthly income for rent. The, the present charge of residence rental units and the prevailing uh rent levels have a detriment effect on the health, safety and welfare of the substitution number of, of, well, we need to edit that one. I missed one of my Rainier residency. This is the recent wife. Um, and it says particular persons in low and moderate income households and persons of fixed incomes who reside in the county, the residential um tenants consult more than two-thirds of the residents of the city of Mount Rainier. The resident tennis impact by housing instability where rent increases outpace incomes. That the welfare of all persons who live in Mount Rainier areas is dependent upon the access of affordable housing for Mount Rainier residents. The rent increases outpace wages over the last few decades and that the rent increase even outpaces regular CPI inflation. Residents need protections from exorbitant uh rent increases. So by authority of title eight landlord tenant, uh, the city of Marin has authority to set limits on rental increases in residential properties. It says limitations on rent increases, the landlords should charge or accept from attending a rent increase within a twelve-month period that is up to, but not to the extent of three percent of the existing monthly rent for any resident property, except as otherwise allowed under section reasonable return on investment or exception section. The vacancy limitations on the amount of annual increase shall apply regardless of any change in occupancy in a resident rental unit, except as otherwise allow under session reasonable return or investment or exceptions. Rental registry, a non, a non-accepted rental properties must be in the city's rental registry, unregistered, non- as, oh my goodness, my eyes are hurting. Accepted properties cannot legally raise rents and are subject to fines. Each registered unit will be assessed fee of fifty dollars to cover city administrative expenses. The city should establish a rental registry. Within six months of this legislation passage, registration for this uh legislation should be required on no annual basis. All right, so you guys that keep hearing about the recent return on investments, so here's the clause. A, the city should establish a process by which landlords can request exceptions to the limitations on rent increase based on the right of a reasonable return on investment. Ratio for deviation from the limitations on rent increase must take into account the following factors. One, increases or decreases in property taxes. Two, the cost of plan or completed capital improvements to the rental unit as discussed from the ordinance repairs, replacement and maintenance, where such capital improvements are necessary to bring the property into compliance or maintain compliance with applicable local code requirements affecting health and safety and where such capital improvements costs are properly addressed over the life of the improvement. Oh man, hold on. We're number three, right, Melissa? Yes.
Yes.
I will be, you know, this is the reason why. It's like I have to get twenty twenty vision, right? Failure of the part of the landlord to provide adequate housing services or that comply subsidiary with applicant state rental housing laws, local housing, health and safety codes or the rent agreement. Number four, the pattern of recent rent increases or decreases. B, it is intended of this chapter that exceptions to the limitations on the rent increases be made only when the landlord demonstrates that such adjustments are necessary to provide the landlord with a fair return on investment. And C, the city of Marin will not grant an exception to the limitations on increase for any unit where the landlord has told to bring the rental unit into compliance with the implied warranty of heebie-eee. Exceptions. I think we're almost done, guys. The limitations on rent increases should not apply to the amount that its housing services provide can reimbursed by government entity under Maryland state law. B, limitations on rent increase should not apply to changes in the tenant obligation. For income-based payments uh where the renter obligations established as a share of income, the limitations will now allow property owners who lack rental license to increase rents. Rental properties with less than fifteen years old, buildings with two or fewer units occupy uh owner-occupied buildings, short-term leasing agreements, the finest lease of thirty days or less published via short-term leasing platforms such as Airbnb, extensions of leasing beyond thirty days that will make the unit subject to rental allowance clause prescribed. Enforcement penalty and provisions penalties for violations in addition to any other remedy available of equity or law. Failure to comply with provision of this chapter may result in criminal prosecution and/or administrative fines as provided by the Maryland, Maryland legislative code. Private act, uh, private right of actions and intending grievance by the landlord of compliance with this chapter may seek equitable relief in any court of competent jurisdiction to the extent permitted by the law if found guilty of a serious breach of this chapter. The commitment fine for the landlord is three months rent plus attorney fees and provision of waiver at least provision which waives or pursues to waive any right benefits or entities created in this chapter should be devoid and of no lawful force in effect. Severity, if any of the parts of provisions of the sections or the application therefore to any person circumstances held invalid or unconstitutional by a decision of court competent jurisdiction, the remainder of the section, including the application of such part or provisions to the person, circumstances or other those that which it is um held invalid should be, should not be affected. Thereby should be continued in full force and affected to this end, the provision of the sections are severable. And here's the law will become contingent upon the rental registry because it's necessary to hold them accountable for this restructuring place. The law should become effective blank twenty twenty-two. And that's it, correct, Melissa? So you guys heard our first summary, the first reading, there's a bit of work that needs to happen and this is why we'll go to work session. But I want to make sure that it was at least read in public. So that way we uh, we start moving forward on what steps to take. All right. And obviously, there's at least one addition that, that I need to make. All right. So I'm gonna open this up to uh counsel and um, and um, Martin, my apologies, you are here. Uh, you are the council member for uh, for City of Laurel. You couldn't change your name. That's fine. All right. So um, I'm gonna start with uh Jimmy, Luke and Valerie.
I may, I appreciate all your work on this and I look forward to getting this moving forward and having a full discussion and work session.
Thank you so much, Jimmy. Luke?
Yeah, no, I appreciate you get this up and running. This has been something that I know you have, you have, you've championed and other folks have talked about doing and we just haven't gotten around to doing it. So appreciate you taking the ball on this and, and getting us to talk about it. Um, the issues that, you know, I think we're, we're gonna have to deal with are the ones that I, I think I saw Alyssa send us um in, in her kind of opinion on the matter, which is having to do um, that economic study um and thinking about what that um, what that percentage would be for allowable increases. Um, and then I think the other thing that we want to think about is, you know, there are places that rent in the city that um, you know, aren't our department buildings. Um, they could be a smaller residence and, and how we distinguish between um those, those folks. Um, uh, if you, if they, they go through like a remodel and they want to start renting out their home to a um, a larger or, or different sort of market, um, you know, I don't want to make sure we don't get in the way um of that. Um, so those are just some things that we want to just make sure we talk about um uh as we move forward to make sure that we really right-size the legislation. Thanks.
Perfect. Yeah, there's a clause right there, Luke, that does talks about two units. Um, I am gonna be asking Kamali and, and Alma if we could have a list of all the different business buildings in the city. How many units they have and how long, um, when were they originally built so that we have more understanding as a background? But I wanted to make sure right now, it says two units or less, but it could be four or whatever number we determine. I think that Alma might be able to help us in that end, you know, because as you know, like um, even with the taxes, like um, after certain numbers considered a multiplex and anything under the number is just like a rental unit. So it would, this would not apply to like, you know, homes that rent, you know, that are renting like the four units or whatever it is, right? They don't apply, they don't apply on, on, on this one. At least from what I understand, unless we make it more clear and more fine-tuned, but perfect. All right. And the other one, I will be sending information to Alyssa because um that was, I mean, he gave us information from when the city um, from a previous city that passed a couple of years back. But uh, since then, like other cities have passed like the three percent um ruling. So I do have that information. I'll be sharing it with you guys as well. Okay? Perfect. Uh Valerie, the first, yours?
Um, I think I just echo what Jimmy and Luke said. Um, good job getting this going and I look forward to further conversations about it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, so what I'm gonna do right now is gonna open up the, the floor to the, to the community. Um, so that we get to talk and um, and, and hear for them as well. I know this is something that they've been asking uh for quite a bit. We got a little deterred through COVID. I mean, we were in survival mode, but that's what was important for us to pick it up one, once again and make sure it stays here. All right. So um Gloria Santana from thirty-two hundred Chilum Road. Um, well, well, el piso studio si quieres hablar o comentar. Y Trent, you're gonna translate, right?
Yeah, I'm gonna translate.
Thank you. So go ahead.
Buenas noches, alcaldeza y concilio. Mi nombre es la señora Gloria Centeno. Vivo en el treinta y dos diez del Chilum Road, el apartamento tres cero dos. Y mi renta fue aumentada por doscientos dólares. Llevo doce años viviendo en esta dirección. Y eso para mí no es fácil, ya que yo vivo sola. Y aparte de eso, solo trabajo cuatro horas. Yo quisiera pues continuar viviendo aquí, verdad? Ya que estoy establecida. Y tengo mi doctor en esta área. Y pues me gustaría quedarme a vivir aquí. Ya soy una persona de edad para estarme moviendo de un lado a otro. Aparte de eso, soy sobreviviente de, de un tumor que tuve en mi cabeza. Y por eso, por esta razón es que vengo a ustedes, a tocar sus corazones sensibles para porque no me parece justo este, este aumento que me han dado. Y yo les suplico que si por favor pues pueden ayudarme, verdad? Pasar este, este, a tener una estabilización de la renta, por favor.
So uh, my name is Gloria Centeno and I live in thirty-two ten Chilum Road apartment three zero two. Um, this past year, my rent was increased two hundred dollars. I've been living here for twelve years. And that rent increase wasn't easy. I live alone and I'm still not working full-time. I want to continue living here and I've established myself here. My doctor is here. My clinic is here in Mount Rainier. It's such a beautiful city and it's great for all the transportation around. But with my, you know, I also am an older person and it's hard to move with a uh debilitating disease that I have and a tumor, brain tumor that I have. Um, so for this reason, I'm asking all of you to touch your hearts and consider passing rent stabilization. This rent increase on, was very hard on me and I don't believe it was fair. And I'm grateful to everyone for listening to my worries and for lifting up the introduction of this rent stabilization law.
Muchas gracias señora Gloria por sus palabras, I thank her for her words, thank you for translation, Trent. Carmen Duarte, 2703 Allison Street. El piso es tuyo Carmen.
Buenas noches alcaldesa, mi nombre es Carmen Duarte y este, vivo en el 27, 27 San Prado de la Alzo Estrella, apartamento 1, Mont Rainier, y mi renta fue este, aumentaron 100 dólares la renta, y espero sentidos, ustedes pongan la mano en el corazón y que soy, para que así esté. Estabilizar un poco la renta y que Dios me acompañe y la virgen, este, un poco nada, pero este, pero en Dios y la virgen que todo se resuelva con el control de la renta, mía y yo lo queremos este, estar aquí en esta comunidad porque está todo cerca y tengo mi doctor y todo aquí es más accesible, gracias y que Dios me bendiga.
My name, my name is Carmen Duarte and I live at 2703 Allison Street apartment 1, I've been living in the complex for two years and this past year my rent was increased $100 a month, I ask that you touch your heart to pass this rent, rent stabilization law that God and Virgin Mary be with you in making sure that we can continue to live here, I live here with my daughter and we do not want to move from here, we feel like this is our community and, and I've also have, am able to go to the clinic in the area for my own sickness as well, thank you.
Muchas gracias por su, por su comentario. Podría, la siguiente persona sería Wilmer Sandoval, 3310 Chauncey Place, and council after this one, I am gonna ask you guys to, to allocate a couple more time, we do have a couple people that would like to speak, okay? So go ahead, Wilmer, el micrófono es tuyo.
Es, lo va a pasar a Mercedes, a Wilmer este le pasó una emergencia, pero Mercedes va, va a cerrar ahora, puede ser?
Okay, so yes, fine, Mercedes is the one that will be speaking, Wilmer had an emergency and had it go, but she, she's here to speak, pues, pues.
Buenas tardes señor alcaldesa y concilio, mi nombre es Mercedes Matamoros, vivo en el 3316 Chauncey Place, apartamento 201, llevo tres años en Mount Rainier y mi aumento es de 200 dólares, soy madre soltera de cuatro hijos y a ellos les gusta vivir aquí, ya se adaptaron a su escuela, sus maestros y amigos y el estarse moviendo de un lado a otro les afecta, no les hace bien, también tengo un niño con necesidades especiales que le cuesta adaptarse a estar en nuevos lugares, en mi trabajo me han reducido mis bolas desde la pandemia y no me alcanza lo que gano, los aumentos en los list no son justos, por esta razón estoy aquí reunida con mis vecinos frente a ustedes para pedirles que por favor piensen en nosotros los inquilinos, agradezco muchísimo a la señora alcaldesa y concilio por haber escuchado nuestras preocupaciones y demandas y llevar adelante esta ley de estabilización de renta que es muy necesaria.
My name is Mercedes Matamoros and I live at 3316 Chauncey and I've been there for three years, this past year my rent was increased $200 a month, I live here with my four children who attend the local schools, they've made friends here, they've liked their school here, they've liked their teachers here and they want to stay here in the community, one of my child, children has special needs and in particular he has trouble adjusting to new places, it's very important that we continue to be able to live here in Mount Rainier. As a result of the pandemic, I lost my job and with this rent increase, it's made it all the more difficult, I thank the mayor and the council for listening to us, for listening to our voices and, and lifting up this issue to consider putting a cap on how much rent can be increased, thank you.
Also can we please go ahead and add some more minutes?
So moved.
I will second any objection, abstention, here now, ten more minutes have been added, thank you so much Jimmy and council members, okay. Tenemos la lista next is Rosemary Vázquez de 3318 Chauncey. Rosemary is next from Chauncey. Tienes el micrófono cerrado, Rosemary, no te podemos escuchar.
Ya, buenas noches querida alcaldesa y concilio, esperando en Dios de que se encuentren bien, mi nombre es Rosemary Cifuentes, vivo en el 3318 Chauncey Place, apartamento 101 Mount Rainier, Maryland. Vivo aquí en esta ciudad por más de 15 años y mi renta, en este año el aumento fue de 100 dólares mensuales, mi esposo y yo pues tenemos poco trabajo, dado el caso que yo camino con prótesis en una pierna y también tenemos familia que ayudar, por ejemplo, mi mamá le ha dado derrame cerebral y no es justo que ellos no piensen en las necesidades que nosotros los inquilinos podemos tener, por esta razón venimos nuevamente a ustedes para que nos ayuden a pasar la estabilización de la renta, por favor, se los pedimos de todo corazón que nos, nos ayuden porque cada uno tenemos grandes necesidades y, y que nuestras peticiones sean escuchadas, también, finalmente pues yo les agradezco muchísimo a nuestra querida alcaldesa y al concilio por haber escuchado nuestras preocupaciones y demandas, llevar adelante esta ley de estabilización de renta que es muy necesario para cada uno de todos nosotros de aquí, de los inquilinos de aquí de Mount Rainier y que Dios me lo bendiga a cada uno de ustedes, gracias.
Gracias Rosemary, bendiciones a ti también y a todo el colectivo, Trent.
My, good evening mayor and council, I hope you're well, I've been living here in the city of Mount Rainier for 15 years and this year my rent was increased $100 per month, my husband and I had lost, you know, have, don't work that much and so it's been very hard on us in, in addition to some of the medical difficulties I've had, we are also helping my mom and other family members, sometimes we feel like these rents are increased without the thought of us, you know, without thinking and knowing who we are, but rather than the renters, so we are asking that you please consider passing something that will support us, the renters, and pass rent stabilization, we ask with all of our heart, this is not just affecting me, but so many of us in this city, and so thank you so much for listening to us, mayor and council, we appreciate you.
Thank you so much, do we have anybody else? Council member Mitchell, the floor is yours. Martin? So Martin, if you're speaking, your, 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 your mic is muted. Martin, okay, so Martin did this.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, what happened?
Go ahead, the floor is yours.
Oh, oh, I was just dropping some dates, we, we have a work session tomorrow, so we'll be discussing rent stabilization as well as tenant protections again, and then I was also sharing that the 12th will be having a meeting, I guess a city council meeting again, and that will be virtual and then the 12th Green Belt will also be having a rent stabilization panel and I will be helping them on that panel and then we'll be having a monthly Zoom call on the 20th and it'll be leaders and stakeholders from other areas in Maryland talking about it, and then I just wanted to highlight the rally in Laurel. So those, those were a few things I want to uplift and of course, if you have any questions, I could definitely drop my, my email and phone in the chat and I'm definitely looking forward to sharing more resources, so yeah, continue doing the great work guys.
Thank you council member, thank you for attending our meeting, I know you have meetings on your own to go to, so I appreciate you being here as well, being supportive, okay? So are you see anybody else, Tony, I see a comment on it, you want me to read it or you're gonna make the comments? Tony George, 3200 block of Rhode Island. Tony, if you're speaking, your mic is muted.
I'm so sorry, it was okay for you to read it, but you know, we had had that Zoom meeting with representatives from our building, so we still have some issues that are outstanding, but I just was in favor of the, the rent ordinance to keep housing affordability affordable in the city, but residents are facing, you know, increases of 10% at least and it's just untimely and people are still kind of vividing from the pandemic and decrease of work opportunities or decrease in hours or lost, lot, lost, loss of jobs as well, so I did want to follow up with you and council from the, the other meeting that we had earlier this year.
Perfect, thank you so much and also I'm glad the elevator is working now, we have actually have.
After February, yeah, it's a long time.
Oh, but I'm definitely happy that that is, that's been taken care of, I mean, there's was so many delays, but finally done, right before the holidays, which is good, so council member Mitchell, Marty Mitchell did put his email right there, so council if you guys need to reach out as well, and Mitchell, a Laurel dot M D dot U S and his phone number, feel free to reach out, various cities are also working in this, on this item and you know, we're, we're definitely making sure we don't drop the ball on this, alright, perfect. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this item? Please let me know so that I could call upon you. Okay, see, anything on Facebook, Jared? Perfect, tal, que si, si se puede completamente, alright, so you guys have it, I'll send the other information out to you guys and we'll be ready for the 20, I am asking a couple of experts as well to come in and talk to us about the subject so that way, if you have any questions, you go to address it to them, okay? Council, from here to then, if you have any questions, feel free to send, you could send that to all, well, to me, as all, but I will reply, I will reply individually so that we don't have violated open meeting, okay? Alright, perfect, thank you guys, alright, so moving on to the next item, alright council, you had anything about that or you're good? Raise your thumb, I can actually see you, Luke, you're good, Valerie, you're good, Jimmy?
Yeah.
So muchas gracias a todos por ven, por venir esta noche, el consejo ha recibido la información y va, y va el diciembre 20 a tener una sección de trabajo para poder hablar cerca del tema y poder así ir más en detalles a lo que viene a la, a la ordenanza, okay? So I basically said that, that they, you know, they received the document and they receive, they receive all their comments and on December 20, we're gonna have a work session where we'll talk more about the items, so I thank them for being here tonight and for the testimonials that they gave, alright? That's my short translation of what I just said, okay?
Okay, council, perdón, queremos decir muchísimas gracias a todos los que estamos aquí, este, en el apartamento de la señora Rosemary, gracias, muchas gracias, señora alcaldesa, concilio, por habernos escuchado, por habernos este, darnos espacio e meternos en sus reuniones, thank you so much for giving you a chance for, for, for learning, legenotura, hear about everything that happened with the people, thank you so much, thank you, thank you, thank you, God bless you.
Y recuerden, estas son sus reuniones, so ustedes pueden entrar cuando ustedes quieran, so I said these are your meetings, so you're welcome anytime to, to join us, okay? And that's in behalf of all of us, alright, so muchas gracias por todo y tenga unas buenas noches y, y los vemos el diciembre 20, y si quieren más gentes que hablar también pueden venir, okay, so we'll see them December 20, alright.
Adiós, buenas noches.
Buenas noches Trent so much, thank you for translating and please thank the whole Casa team as well for helping, council member Mitchell, thank you so much for being here and I know the council members from other cities wanted to join, they couldn't because of their meetings like overlapped a little bit, but they do send their, their greetings to all of you guys, council, okay, that include, that includes Blensburgs and, and other cities, you tell me, hi, so, alright, perfect, yes, who's this?
Sorry, my name is Gloria and I'm from Delegate Fennell's office.
Hi Gloria.
Hi, how are you? I'm sorry, I should have spoke up earlier, I just wanted to make a quick announcement, if I may.
Go ahead.
The delegate would like for me to let you guys know that we are having a toy drive at the Brentwood Firehouse on December 22nd from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM and you are all welcome to come out and support and we'd be honored to see you guys.
Thank you so much Gloria, and if you could email me that flyer, we'll, we'll share it out to all of our residents as well.
Those flyers will be out tomorrow, you'll get it tomorrow.
Perfect, thank you so much Gloria for being here and extend our, our thank you to Delegate Fennell as well.
Okay, you're welcome.
Alright, perfect, thank you, alright, so moving on to item number eight, I feel like my eyes are bleeding of how much they're hurting. Discussion and vote on selection of contractor for Potts Hall Welcome Center project, Mr. Kamali, the floor is yours, and this item was discussed on, up in the work session, so this is not a new item and the bid went on and that was also discussed, so this is the first time it's been brought up, go ahead, Mr. Kamali, the, the floor is yours.
Yeah, mayor, well, as I was directed in the last meeting, so the city would like to go through phasing and based on the available fund that we have, right now we're looking at $3 million, so we asked the contractor to separate the work and put it in two phases and based on that, I've been in touch with the city attorney to revise the contract, so yesterday we had a meeting and we almost ready to sign the contract if tonight the mayor and council, you know, vote on it, so phase one is gonna be for the total of $3,404,0479, so that's gonna be for the phase one and phase two is gonna be 2633191 and it depends, you know, if we could continue with phase two simultaneously with phase one, there is no increase, but Monarch is not willing to commit themselves for phase two because of the uncertainties in the market, so, and phase one probably is gonna take six to eight months and they don't want to commit themselves to phase two because they are not sure about the market in next six or eight months, so what I'm asking mayor and council to vote on phase one tonight, then city attorney and myself and the contractor and architects are working on it to hopefully get this one completed by Friday and I will keep everybody posted, I have the architects on call, if you guys have any question, we'll be glad to answer.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kamali, I'm gonna go open the floor up this time, Jimmy, Valerie, Luke, go ahead.
It sounds good and I'm, or moving forward to it, I think doing two phases and you know, we only can commit to the money we have on hand, hopefully we'll be able to raise enough money for part two, do we need a motion on this mayor or after discussion if I can move it so we then have the discussion on it?
I would like, yeah, you can make a motion and we'll go for discussion so we can have the conversation or have the conversation out and open the discussion, doesn't matter.
Well, let me move it and then something I can second that we can, you know, have discussion, then we can move ahead. I'd like to move the, uh, support the recommendation, uh, from the city manager. What's the name of it? Is it Monarch?
Monarch, Monarch. Yeah, Monarch Construction.
Our attorney, I think, told us that we would do that and they would do the details after that. Thank you. I think we need a second.
It might have to be more specific, Jimmy, for the amount and the company. What's the amount, Mr.?
Three million dollars for that company. Is that correct?
Yeah, Monarch. And the, the total for phase one is three million forty thousand and seventy nine dollars.
All right, three million fourth forty thousand and seventy nine.
Yes.
Okay, can I have a second on the floor? Valerie? So it's been properly moved and second, any objection? Actually, it's open for this, uh, well, if we do it, well, we're gonna have to vote on it again. But this is just to open it up for discussion. All right. Any abstentions, um, objections? None? Any discussion? Okay, so now I'm gonna move on to, uh,
Hold on, Mary. Yeah, no, just on the discussion point. I, I don't know if Valerie had any point of discussion, but I
I am gonna call on you guys. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna skip you guys.
Sorry.
I promise you, I promise I'm calling on you and Valerie. That's a go. Jimmy already spoke, but you guys have the floor. You have to go the second round if you need to. Cause I have something to say. So discussion is not gonna be skipped. Trust me. It's a lot of money. Um, okay. So Valerie, the floor is yours.
Um, yeah, I mean, like I said earlier, I support this project moving forward and I'm glad that we're moving it. Um, I do think we should, you know, really make sure we have a good plan for finding the rest of the funding, um, in a, in quick order here. Um, you know, so I just, I just hope you are aware of that and are ready to, you know, apply for every grant you possibly can or, you know, state bond funding or anything like that, um, to get the rest of the money so that we can keep this, um, construction moving forward. Um, so yeah, that's, that's my point. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie.
Yeah, I know. That, that's a great point from Valerie. Like if we do get the rest of the funding, let's say from the feds, um, you know, if we could just, you know, quickly move into phase two with Monarch and some sort of contracts. Question for, I know Alyssa mentioned with phase two, you might have to go out to bid, but I wonder if there's a way once, you know, if, if we do get funding soon that you could sort of, um, get into a phase, like, like amend that phase one contract to just include phase two if we do get that funding. But that's kind of neither here or there for the moment. Um, and just to confirm, the architects, the way I heard Jimmy, and I think how I saw an email from the architects and so that, um, that the residents know is that the architects are working in hand to make sure that, um, the, the, the work identified, um, in phase one and the costs, um, are, are exactly how we want them to be and make sense. Um, from both a cost perspective and a build perspective, i.e., these are the things that you want to get done in phase one. Is that correct, Mr. Kamali?
Yes, sir. And it's listed on the screen. So
Yep.
can see it and items are listed over there. And if they need more information, we can provide more information.
Great.
Perfect. Um, I'm gonna say something before I open it to a second round. Jim, if you have something else to add. Uh, definitely thank you guys for putting this together and putting the screen. I think the next step for us is definitely, um, I'll probably have like Kamali, myself and one of you guys that want to join along with, uh, our consultant firm. Because there's documents, I need to make sure they have them, uh, Mr. Kamali, uh, put together so that way, um, they know specifically what are we using the funds for Potts Hall to figure out where they need to go looking for additional funds based on what is needed for Potts Hall. So it's not just like Potts Hall construction, but if it's something specifically, they might be able to find, uh, money elsewhere. Okay? So that'll probably be Kamali Finance. I mean, Kamali Finance, Econ, myself and what Ivan's team and one more person. So we don't need open meeting and that we will get the information together, share with the, for the rest. And, um, and then have another meeting, but this has to happen quickly. So I'll be sending an email out. So that way we start doing the network because, um, there's a fine time where people could apply for money. And I don't want us to get back in the position where we have to suspend the rules. Uh, thank you, um, Malcolm Augustine, Senator, for doing that for us, uh, last time. But this is not gonna fly. If we do that again, I'll tell you guys, I mean, that was, I, I got, um, I got very lightly, very lightly told that they know they did that, uh, that that was done last, last, um, last season by other members of, uh, of the Senate. And they said, like, make sure you put everything in this time because that was like, you're free, get out of, get, get out of life. You feel grayed car. You, you already used it this time around. So then you said again, you're, you're a new mayor. So we get, we give you a, a, a break. But saying that, um, a hundred percent, we're gonna be looking for everything. I think if we break it down specifically on what is it that the work is gonna be, it will also allow for us to figure out what pockets we could go for. Um, just an example, like if anything is, um, ADA, is there a grant that we could go to like, you know, um, aim that ADA compliance for a building, right? And X, Y, and Z. So something along those lines. Okay? So discussion is gonna have to take place very soon. So that will, we start the year off. And yeah, that's a great question to ask, at least that when it comes between phase one and phase two, because if we get the money we need, um, that, uh, their consultants Greenwell is working on right now, that should be able to increase a little bit more. The other news that I received, uh, from, um, Delegate Fennell is that the two hundred and fifty thousand are being, um, they'll be discussing the Board of Public Works tomorrow. It's on the agenda and looks very favorable. They think like that is gonna, nothing, uh, will deter from it, but just be on the lookout. Um, and as soon as it gets approved, she'll let us know. But we've been following very closely to make sure that any, any bit of money that the centers and delegates have worked on us, um, to get this funding, um, is there. So that's Delegate Fennell, Delegate Julian Ivy, and also, um, Senator Augustine, who's been also a champion for us and, and, and funding as well. And of course, Greenwill, um, consultant. All right. So um, I'm gonna ask this, um, again, Jimmy, do you need anything to add for the second round?
No, good.
Luke? Valerie? Okay, there was the motion in the floor to, uh, prove, um, to the last screen, Melissa? So make sure I say this correctly. Up to three million. Was, oh my goodness. Three million forty.
Thousand.
Forty thousand with seventy nine.
Seven nine dollars.
Dollars. Not to exceed that, uh, for phase one for Monarch. Um, okay. All right. So council, you heard the discussion, the discussion. Uh, there's something else. Let me open it up to the public. And then we'll go for a verbal vote. Okay. So I'm, I'm gonna have to, you guys are gonna have to literally say yes, uh, so that we could put it on record, uh, especially because of the streaming of this. All right. So members of the public, um, do you have anything, any questions regarding, regarding Potts Hall or regarding this item on the agenda? Okay, anything on Facebook? All right. Seeing that there's no comment on our screen, on our chat or no comments also when it comes to our Facebook. Um, council, I'm gonna call you your name and please give me a vote. Okay? All right. Uh, we're gonna start with Valerie Woodall.
Well, I
Luke Cheswick?
I.
Jimmy Tarlo? Jimmy?
Oh, I'm on mute. Sorry.
Wh- what was your vote?
Aye.
Aye, and I'm an aye. So that's four, four ayes, um, zero abstentions, and we have, uh, one person that was absent. So there's no, so the motion carries, uh, with four votes. Okay. So it was unanimous. Okay, Mr. Kamali. So work with legal to figure out what the next steps are and we'll move forward. Uh, I know I could see Brian Neller right now celebrating. I was thinking about you, uh, Brian. So Brian, make it coming. Fantastic. Congrats to current customer for getting the moving after a couple of decades. And thank you, Brian, as well. Um, as well as Mayor Miles for the work in previous councils, um, for getting us here, you know, um, for the vision of buying the building, but also like not letting go. Uh, we appreciate you guys as well. All right, perfect. Uh, moving on to the next item, item number nine. Discussion appointment to the Police Advisory Board. The mayor and council will appoint the members for the Police Advisory Board. So at this moment, I'm gonna ask Melissa to read the names of the people that, um, that are, are part, were one, were two in the apartments when it came to the advisory board. Okay. Oh, thank you, Melissa. You have them on screen. Thank you, Melissa. I'll read them. All right. So we have police, uh, review and advisory board for war one and to Star Hamid, Sharon Robinson, war two, Chevali Shaw, Valerie Solinsky. And for the apartments, Tony George. And let me see, I, I think I saw a couple of them. I see, let me see. Sharnes here, uh, and to Star is here. I saw Tony and I saw Chevali, correct? Who am I missing? Valerie, you're here as well, right? Valerie was here earlier. There's also a whole confusion with which Valerie was I speaking to? All right. So, um, so we have, uh, so we are gonna go one by one. I need you guys to, the ones that are here to verbally accept this appointment. There's at least three people that are, are currently in other committees. You do, uh, upon, um, a clerk did reach out to you and you guys acknowledged that you guys need to restand your positions. Uh, when was the deadline, Melissa?
Forty eight hours.
Okay, you have forty eight hours to relinquish your position. If not, um, you are not gonna be, your appointment to this, uh, board gets rescinded, um, and you're not allowed to apply again. All right. Um, okay. So let me, uh, basically, where, where are you guys? So I'm gonna go one by one since you guys are here. I think Valerie is the only one that, that's not here, but, uh, into star. Any words you wanna say? Uh, former councilmember into star, um, your mic is muted if you're, if you're saying something. Nothing? Okay. Sharnet?
Hi, um, yes, I accept the position and, um, appreciate it. Thank you.
And you have resigned already, correct? I think that's what the clerk told us.
Yes, I did.
Thank you so much for that. All right, perfect. Uh, Chevali, uh, former councilwoman, Chevali Shaw?
Hi, thank you so much for this appointment. Um, I look forward to, uh, speaking with the council and to the other, my fellow advisory board members more about this.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Uh, Valerie Solinsky. Um, I don't see her here. She was here earlier. She was actually calling from, um, from, from out of state. Okay, uh, Tony, the floor is yours.
Uh, I accept the appointment. I'm looking forward to serving.
And you will be resigning for your position as well, correct?
Correct.
Thank you so much. Um, okay. So I just wanted to make sure to give, uh, the people we're, we're, we're appointing an opportunity to say something. Now, council, I'm gonna go to you guys next. Uh, we are gonna start with Luke this time around. Luke, Valerie and Jimmy, go ahead. Luke?
I just want to say thank you to all the residents for stepping up, um, to this. This is a very important, um, work that you have. Um, and I just appreciate your willingness to volunteer time on behalf of the city, uh, in this important work. So thank you. And then I'll stop talking.
Thank you, Luke. Uh, Valerie?
Um, yeah, I think I'll just reiterate that. I mean, it's, um, thank you very much for stepping up and, and committing your time. Um, and I look forward to seeing what you guys come up with.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Uh, I just want to add that I think I volunteered to, it's assigned to be the liaison and to the committee members. What I'm planning on is arranging a time, uh, to meet with the chief, uh, and the city manager, uh, but especially the chief to, to have our first meeting, hopefully sometime after the first of the year. Uh, we designed the police advisory board so it would not conflict with state and, and, uh, law. Unfortunately, it meant that some of the things that was originally signed, like doing investigations, uh, will not be part of it until they change the state law. But I think we're the first group to do this and what we're gonna be doing is basically hearing about the policies and the procedures that the police use and making recommendations and talking to them about those kinds of how they could policies from a citizen viewpoint and also, uh, reviewing with the city manager and the, and the chief, the, the budget, uh, before it's actually submitted. Those are the two tasks that have been assigned. So I'm gonna reach out to the chief and reach out to everybody to figure out a meeting where we can all get together and each have our first meeting. Hopefully it will be a, a good discussion. We'll have good community. Be first to have like some kind of community outreach where we kind of actually, you know, hearing more about how the police operate and what people feel about it. So thank you all for volunteering. I look forward to working with you all.
So thank you. Okay, uh, thank you so much. Uh, so thank you, everyone that volunteered, uh, for this, uh, advisory board. Thank you to the members that have accepted appointment. Um, I think Jimmy gave you a bunch of the stuff that I wanted to say, but basically the next meeting, uh, was it called, uh, City Clerk, Jimmy, um, Alyssa Chief, um, you guys are gonna be working together. So on the legal side, they'll talk to you about whatever else you guys need to, uh, know. Um, and Jimmy already like detailed on, on what the change was originally from this advisory board to what it is, uh, based on the limitations on state law. All right. Uh, so thank you guys for your time. Please submit your resignations because we definitely don't want, um, to lose you guys from this committee. One and two, that also will give us time to open up, um, open up some of the committees, uh, for new members to join them. All right. So, um, saying that, we need to take a formal vote consult to accept the appointments of into Star Hamid, uh, Sharon Robinson, Chevali Shaw, Valerie Solinsky and Tony George to the police review and advisory board. I need us to move. Jimmy, you want a second this? You're a mute.
Seconded. Thank you.
All right. Any discussion, council? Objection, abstentions? Hearing none. Uh, so today, December sixth, our police review and advisory board has been, is fully seated. Um, so by Friday, I believe, um, the, the names are gonna go up on our, on our website. And, uh, please follow through, um, committee members. All right. Um, and that means that there's at least two, three committees that will have open seats. If you want to serve on the ethics, the board of elections, um, direct, um, let us, let us know. We'll put that information out so that way you could apply. Um, whether it is to be, um, a member of or, um, any resident could show up to any of the meetings as long as that they're not talking about one of the items starts for closed session. You could show up and, and listen to the meetings. All right. Okay. Thank you guys so much and have a good night. Thank you for staying with us. Okay? All right. Moving on to the next item. Okay, thank you, Melissa. Item number ten, second reading and adoption resolution number four dash twenty twenty two proposed budget calendar for the fiscal year twenty twenty four budget twenty, hopefully not twenty minutes. Mayor and council will have a second reading and adoption of, of resolution of for twenty twenty two proposed budget calendar for fiscal year twenty twenty four. Can you put it on the screen, please, Melissa? All right. And basically that we're asked is like we're establishing a budget calendar to, uh, alert residents of when we'll be discussing the budget. This basically, uh, means that, um, added to your calendars, residents, so that way you know we're discussing it. But this will be for the FY twenty four budget that runs from July twenty twenty three, July first twenty twenty three to June thirty twenty twenty four. And, um, basically that's it. So move it up. Uh, not too high. So let me just read that these are already passed, right? The work session setting the proposed budget calendar, uh, the November first was first reading of the resolution stating the proposed budget calendar to say the sixth, which is today, adoption of the resolution proposed budget calendar. Friday the ninth, budget instructions issued to all departments, committees and community groups. The Friday the twenty seventh, deadlines of all city departments, committees and community groups to submit budget FY twenty four, uh, to CM, uh, ferry twenty four, city managers to miss proposed budget to council stuff that all that days prior to twenty seven is basically admin. to council stuff that all that days prior to twenty-seven is basically administrative work, okay? Uh, let me see, then you have Tuesday ferry, the twenty eighth, city manager presents proposed budget FY twenty twenty-four, uh, to, um, to mayor and council, hold work session on proposed budget FY twenty twenty-four and discuss of the tax rate, so on that meeting, we'll talk about the tax rate proposal the city manager has. Council will be ready to make any suggestions and then you know, the city manager will, will adopt, uh, will, will make the adjustments necessary based on what the tax rate is, cuz you know, like our budget is heavily based, um, on our tax rates. Alright, um, Thursday the ninth, notice published in the print journal's post and our sentinel a public hearing on proposed FY twenty-four budget schedule for March twenty twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Constant yield rate will be posted and published as well on sorry, it was supposed to say March twenty-fifth, my apology. I'm on the next item, Melissa, you're messing with me. Saturday twenty-fifth, yeah, there you go, twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, public hearing, this is a Saturday meeting, please note. Uh, public comments on proposed budget FY twenty twenty-four. Council work session on budget, I know, mayor and council work session on budget FY twenty twenty-four. Uh, Tuesday, April eleventh, discussion of FY twenty-four proposed budget first reading into record of the FY twenty-four twenty twenty-four budget ordinance, April eighteen. We have another public hearing on the proposed FY twenty twenty-four budget discussions of city council by city council of, um, of the proposed, but you guys have to like keep either, either it's mayor and council or the city council, the city council like is all of us, city council is just a council. Mayor twenty, uh, oh, sorry, Tuesday, April twenty-fifth, second reading of FY twenty-four budget ordinance and possible vote, uh, May, uh, Tuesday, May second. If needed, vote on FY twenty-four budget ordinance and June sixth. If needed, 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 vote on FY twenty-four budget ordinance. The, okay, don't move it, I can read it. The budget calendar for the preparation and adoption of the city of Mount Rainier for budget may be amended or adjusted by mayor and council as necessary. And it's attested by, by the signatures right there, you see, okay? So, uh, council, community, like all of us, uh, you went too far. Um, so you guys heard, uh, read through of it, Melissa? You were able to, uh, change it from, change the spring date, correct? Move it away from, for work session and legislative meeting when it came to the big readings? And added an extra day, correct? Those were the edits from the last time. Am I missing something, Melissa?
No, mayor.
Okay, so, council, I'm gonna open it up to you, we're gonna go Valerie, uh, Jimmy and Luke this time around? Go ahead.
Um, well, thank you, Melissa, and everyone for your work on this, I think this is a good budget schedule, um, and I'm looking forward to, to mailing down the budget in FY twenty-four.
Thank you so much, Valerie, uh, we said Jimmy and Luke?
It looks, it looks fine, thank you.
Luke?
This looks great to me, and I appreciate everyone getting on board with this schedule, thank you.
Thank you guys so much, uh, thank you, Luke, uh, so Melissa, the only thing is, is this is minor, it's not gonna hold the vote for today. Can you just make sure it says like, it says council meeting, can you just make it is the, the meeting of mayor and council? Or the work session mayor and council, cuz that's the proper heading, okay, just edit that one, those, and it should be fine. Okay, that's minor, okay? Alright, council, you have a budget that has been reviewed three times, Melissa, at least, three times, um, and it's up for vote, put it all the way to the top. There you go, for resolution oh four twenty-two, uh, with the first reading was November first, and it's had like quite a, of work sessions and other readings in between, alright? Um, so, council, what do you say? Can I have a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Seconded.
Is we properly move and second, any discussion? Hearing none, any objections? Abstentions? Okay, hearing none, uh, the city of Mount Rainier, uh, budget, uh, schedule has been approved, so this is resolution oh four twenty-two. Alright, thank you so much, and Melissa in communications, can you guys please make sure this dates go up in the city calendar, um, before the end of the week?
Sure, mayor.
Thank you, Melissa, before, before the craziness of Santas and, and, and gifts and pictures, and before the baskets. Melissa's like, yes, before that, thank you, Melissa, alright, so moving on to the next item on the agenda. New business, a discussion and proposal for purchasing new vehicles for the police department, twenty minutes. The mayor and council will have a discussion, a proposal for the city, uh, city manager finance consultant. And this thing is getting lighter, lighter by the second, new vehicles from the police department. Yeah, you're gonna have to, you guys have to use like maybe a thicker font, cuz at least for this screen, alright, so, uh, uh, Kamali or, or Ron Wilson, um, the floor is yours?
Uh, well, so I'm gonna have Ron to explain this recommendation that was sent to the mayor and council based on request from Chief Austin to replace five vehicles in his department for FY twenty-three. So, uh, I reviewed the request with the finance team, and we made a recommendation to mayor and council. So Ron, if you're there, could you please explain some of this information that's in this recommendation that we made to mayor and council?
Sure, from Riley.
The floor is yours, and we also have Chief Austin here as well, okay, team?
Yes.
Alright, go ahead, Ron Wilson.
Alright, uh, so in short, um, uh, for right now, the chief has requested five vehicles be replaced, um, due to their, um, age and mileage. And, and in reviewing it, um, the city manager, uh, agreed that these five vehicles needed to be replaced. Um, the original, uh, request from the police department was to have all five of these vehicles in, uh, to be purchased in, in fiscal twenty-three. Um, and in looking at the timing of it, uh, we felt like we could spread that out ever so slightly. Um, right now, the, the lead time for ordering vehicles is five to six months. If, if we ordered them today, we still wouldn't get them until around mid-April or so. Um, a- and so when we saw that, we thought, well, what we can do i- in order to try to smooth out this budget process, um, going forward is we can purchase three of these vehicles in this fiscal year a- and do two of them in the next fiscal year. But they could be ordered for delivery in, in July, uh, and so the delay would only be a few months. Um, so that is our recommendation, that, that three of the vehicles be purchased in fiscal twenty-three and two of the vehicles be purchased in twenty-four. Um, Melissa, can you scroll down a little bit? Alright, that stop, stop right there, I, I guess, um, uh, the, the cost of three vehicles, um, these would be the, um, the Ford SUV hybrids would be an estimated, uh, one hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. Uh, that includes the fit out for patrol duty. Um, I, I'm, uh, e- excuse me, I, I'm having trouble seeing this as well. Um, uh, we propose to pay for it in the following ways. Um, we're, we're projected to get an extra one hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars from the state police aid. Uh, that's the difference between what we budgeted and what the state actually awarded us. Alright, Melissa, if you could, um, scroll down further, please. Additionally, um, we're estimating that we will get a fifty-six thousand dollar recovery on the two vehicles that were totaled. Uh, both of those, um, insurance recoveries are still in process. We also estimate that sending two of the vehicles to auction, um, we would receive approximately eleven thousand dollars for them. So we put those three sources of funds together uh, and subtract the estimated purchase price of three vehicles. We, we would be left with thirty-seven thousand dollars that we recommend to add to the contingency budget. So that would be for the first three vehicles, the, the other two, uh, since they would be purchased in fiscal twenty-four would be part of the fiscal twenty-four budget discussion, and then we, at that point, we can talk about the sources of funds, um, for those two vehicles. Um, one of the discussion items that came up is everyone was discussing this, um, purchase plan um, that had to do with, um, some excess revenue and less than planned spending in previous fiscal years. And I just wanted to point out to the council that those years are closed now, so whether or not there was excess revenue or, or there was under-spending, um, whatever happened in the previous year has now been closed to fund balance. Um, if you want to use fund balance, uh, for any purpose, whether it's buying vehicles or, or whatever, then that would require a budget modification specifically for a line item called use of fund balance. So that, that's the summary of our recommendation, and, um, we're open for any questions that you might have.
Okay, uh, council? We're gonna go with, uh, Jimmy? Luke, Valerie?
Uh, I don't have any questions, it seems like, uh, we've had some discussion back and forth. Uh, and it seems like a, a good plan.
Luke?
Thank you, mayor, um, I have a few questions, um, uh, chief, maybe these are for, for you to answer here. Um, just to kinda make me understand, uh, making sure we're doing a kind of an efficient use of resources here for the city. Um, so, chief, can you walk me through how many, um, uniform officers do we usually have on, um, on patrol at, at any given time, or I should say, my first question would be what is the maximum number of officers that we have on patrol at any one time? Do we, is the maximum three, or do we ever have four, do we ever have five, what's the maximum that we just have on patrol? Not counting when we call in, um, backup?
Uh, good evening, everyone, uh, Luke, uh, mayor and council, city manager. I did get your questions, Luke, and I don't know if you saw my response.
I did, yep.
The email, so pretty much the responses from patrol and our detective bureau is that uh, maximum number assigned to patrol is, uh, three. Uh, at any time we're all called out.
Yeah.
In the course of a day, I'm called out as well for any incidents that may come out. Uh, so three is our maximum number, and as we continue, so, uh, our twenty-four hour patrol.
Yep, and then chief, so then it's, and then obviously you are, are there, um, and are, um, detective is, 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 might need to be called in, I, I think what, what got said in the email is that there is, on, on a given time, there could be, like if an emergency occurs and you need to call backup, you could have, I think what was quoted was like seven, um, officers inclusive of yourself or the detective could be on site. And then I think it was said that like, if there was a, uh, maybe like, uh, you know, a double homicide or something like that that happened, it could be, um, could be even more, would, would that, is, is the, what is the like, so I understand seven is like a, kind of a, a reasonable max, but then there's sort of the, the, the double emergency scenario. How many, how many folks would, would be called upon in one of those scenarios, would that was, is that, in my mind, is that like doubling it to fourteen, or does that just mean ten, or what is, what does that mean?
Uh, it, it depends, uh, on the incident and the availability of the officers, cuz as you know, uh, the ones on patrol are on twenty-four hour patrol. So we have to take in consideration if they've gotten rest and make sure of the incidents. And the time of the day that the incidences may occur as well. So it's, uh, it could be upwards of, uh, as you know, when we had the, uh, January sixth incident, we had, uh, pretty much all hands. Uh, when we had the, uh, uh, inauguration on January twentieth, that was another all hands, so we just wanna, you know, be prepared to keep our borders with the, uh, D C safe.
Yep, and when it's all hands, how many folks are we talking about?
Uh, every, everyone, everyone.
And how many is that, just so folks understand those numbers?
Uh, if you look at our total, a lot of amount, uh, eighteen at, at most, uh, eighteen on patrol, including me, including the lieutenants, uh, and the detectives.
Okay, and would all those people have their own car and be in their own car, or would there be people to get riding together in one car and those all hand?
Uh, they're all assigned their own vehicles.
Okay. Um, and one of the things I'm getting at is, um, you know, we have, um, you know, eighteen folks um, who could be called in at any given time, um, we're, we're gonna have with this purchase, um, I think more than eighteen vehicles, um, and I'm just, you know, I get the, the sort of all hands days that come, um, they're rare, but they do happen. Um, but from sort of inefficient use of resources function, it, it, it doesn't make sense to me that we would have nineteen cars when usually it's just three people on duty, um, the sort of, for lack of a better term, the normal maximum would be like seven, um, folks who would need access to a car. And then these like really rare times where you have all hands, it's eighteen. It just seems to me like there's a lot of time then where you have the vast majority of these, um, nineteen, twenty cars, whatever it is we're gonna have, that are in, um, not being used for city purposes. Um, and I, so I, I struggle with that from an efficient use of resources, like from, from my end, it feels like a, like a math problem, and you could solve for that math problem by thinking about, okay, you know, people on patrol, obviously they need a car, um, and you could schedule people to be sort of on call. Um, and maybe those people take home their vehicles, so you could have four, six, whoever, officers take home vehicles so that if you did have to have call people into the city, we're covered, the majority of, you know, in, 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 in the vast majority of situations, the people you need to call in have cars and they come right in. And then if there's like a, if there's an all-hand situation, it seems like those situations are known in advance. Um, like the, the insurrection, obviously that kind of wasn't known too much in advance. Um, the, uh, the inauguration, um, so in those situations, I could see how, you know, you, you know in advance, so either you could send an officer home with a car in advance in those situations, or people just could just come into the city to get a car, um, if they need it, or they could ride with another officer. It seems like we could, we could really better use our resources if we just do better scheduling. Um, as opposed to having so many cars for, um, a force that ninety-nine point nine percent of the time doesn't need that many cars on any given day. Um, and so that's my concern with this budget amendment, that with this use of funds is just, it's a, it's a lot of money for cars to be sitting, um, not in use within the city's limits for the vast majority of their time, so that's my concern, and I will, um, so I can't vote to, to move this forward yet, um, without answers on how sort of how a scheduling fix could, could really take care of all these needs, and obviously you'd have to negotiate things with, 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 um, when it comes to take home vehicles and stuff like that, I just have trouble seeing this like a, um, a, uh, a good use of resources, thanks.
Uh, Luke, uh, Luke, I wanna defer to my, uh, patrol lieutenant. Uh, he can pretty much give you some historical on how, what we've tried in the past at the city, in the city of Mount Rainier.
That would be helpful.
Departments have tried, what you're recommending is a, a fleet use of vehicles where they come in and they swap out vehicles and, uh, best practices have shown that those vehicles are, are run through much quicker because you have more wear and tear on them. Uh, but vehicles that are assigned to officers over the long run, uh, cost the cities and municipalities much less. And, um, and I can send you a few reports that have been done on that.
That would be helpful.
Justice Department report as well. And uh, but, but clearly, uh, you know, his, uh, your, your approach has been attempted. And uh, but clearly, uh. You know, there's much more downtime when you're transitioning from one vehicle to another in between shifts. Sometimes we have. Late arrest and we have another shift coming in as able to come in and continue to patrol our streets. So there's so many benefits and we see that the ones that are allowed to take home, they're better kept, they're better maintained. Uh, and if we go to fleet vehicles, they're running all the time, they're running constantly. So they're not really uh, getting an opportunity. Uh, to rest with a twenty four hour schedule. And so those are some of the things that you have to take in consideration and Lieutenant Sims may be able to fill you in a little bit. Lieutenant?
That'd be helpful. Thank you.
Sims, the floor is yours. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, like Chief stated, uh, even with uh. Let's just look at somebody who's very close to us like Baltimore City. Uh, they have issues with their vehicles and they don't really update their vehicles. This is because Baltimore City was using the fleet program. So that means if myself and Lieutenant Calaway were sharing the same vehicle. Uh, when I come in for my shift for eight hours, he comes in here for his shift eight hours. Not only do I have to clean that vehicle. Um, but anything that I leave inside of that vehicle can be noted or. Uh, charged against him, whether it's anything such as the, the transmission goes out, A C's not working. Um, and when you have a vehicle that is running for twenty four hours, or even if running for sixteen hours straight. You'll find that you have a lot more wear and tear on those vehicles, as many agencies have found, while it sounds like a good idea. Also with the uh, emergency call-ins, sometimes those emergency call-ins are expected or known. Um, unfortunately, the emergency would be the emergency that's implied. And by implied, I mean the ones that you cannot prepare for, the ones that you do not know of. Uh, we know so far as that we've had instances or uh, possibility of severe weather. Um, whether it's a hurricane, whether it's a snowstorm, we've all had to deal with these. Um, emergency call-ins when there's a possibility of, uh, I. Can't think of a better word other than insurrection, where there's been threats made against the town, made against neighboring cities. I'm just trying to protect ourselves. The moment that we ended up. For case in point, with the whole Valde uh, Texas shooting. Uh, that becomes an emergency where everyone is now looking at possible school shootings and you have additional officers coming in. Not to mention the liability standpoint of when you have an officer who is inside of the vehicle being called in for an emergency response and having to use their personal vehicle. Uh, the other liability is that you have people who do not like the police, regardless of how much they smile on our face or regardless of the type of job that we do in the community services that we provide. Knowing what an officer, and we have seen this recently. Knowing that someone can go and look on N V A and pull up the records for that particular vehicle when they see a police officer getting out of his or her car. Presents a safety uh, issue for that particular officer because that person can easily be followed home, that also can easily. Have hurt, harm, or danger been done to their family only because we're using our personal vehicles. Also, if there happens to be an instance where we may come up on a situation such as going home. And Bladensburg has a very severe issue um, with their school. We're able to respond in an emergency vehicle to aid support to our, our surrounding sister agencies like Hydesville. Um, it's one of those things where it sounds as, as if it would be a good idea. Um. Only because it sounds as the numbers are there. However, if you look at the way that our schedule is, two days on, two days off, three days on, two days off. Your time of having. Um. A car out would be just as much as having a car in. So has asking for nineteen cars or seeing what our fleet is, we're pretty much, if you look at it, look at it as if you're asking how many officers would be part of the department. To turn around and say, or to ask that we put things together. Um, or have officers riding in cars together. That's one thing, but then turn around and also say that when an officer loses their car, you're probably looking at that officer leaving the agency because that's one of the perks of. Being a police officer, um, especially here to be able to get back and forth to work inside of a vehicle that you're paying. Uh, because we pay for it by being on duty and able to respond to calls as Chief would need us to be on.
Okay, that is very helpful. Thank you for all that.
So much, Sam. Uh, Luke, that was, I have, I have uh, Melissa. Showing that we have less than five minutes on it and I haven't even got to everybody. So. I will go for a second round and I'm gonna ask you guys to please make sure, keep to your three minutes and if you need to second round, then come up for the second round, okay? All right, so um, Valerie, the floor is yours.
Um, thank you for bringing this up. Um, I think um, generally speaking, it seems like a good plan. Um, I do wanna note though. Um, and ask maybe Ron can help me. Um, in the um, budget report, um. Or in the budget, I didn't see that we had any funds in the budget for vehicle purchase. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so ideally we would have had this in the budget before, um, so that we could have foreseen this issue coming up to us. Um, so I would just ask Chief and, and others to, you know, really study what you have and what you need so that in the future, we don't have to make budget amendments to do things. Like vehicle rema- um, maintenance and, and purchasing. Um, and the other question I have for you, Ron, is um. So the, it's coming from um, increased contingency expense. Um. That's two hundred and seventy five thousand in the budget. Is that correct? And then so this would. Thirty seven thousand?
Yeah, that, n- n- not exactly. What, what we've identified is. Um, let's see, hundred and forty two, hundred and ninety eight thousand dollars of additional um, revenue. Uh, that's not in the budget right now. We want to use a hundred and sixty one of it. Uh, we'd actually add another thirty seven to the contingency.
So it would go to like three hundred and six thousand?
Yeah, so we'd go over three hundred thousand. But keep in mind, you know, we, we also have to. Um, make sure that we cover the unbudgeted debt service payment uh, after the first of the year. So we'll probably. Uh, take it out of the contingency when we do that budget modification.
Alright, thank you. Um, yeah, I think that, that's my main thing is just like in the future, let's make sure we get this up into the budget. Before the, so we don't have to worry about coming back in December each year to have a conversation about these things. So, thank you.
The floor is yours. Chief Austin?
I'm here, Mayor.
I'm not sure if you there, uh, Constance Woodow, um. Talked about uh, being added, why wasn't added in the last year's budget? And uh, in, in what was the plan to make sure it's um, submitted in this year's budget?
Uh, her question was why wasn't it added in this year's budget, correct? Is that correct?
Yes.
Um, I'll defer to the City Manager to answer that.
Alright, thank you. Thank you, Chief. Well, right now we do have a plan for, that's why I asked Chief. And at the time of the budget, we didn't have that information. And uh, so right now, moving forward for F Y twenty four. There is zero request and for next six years, we have to almost replace three point two cars. Which is gonna cost, I think it's, it's mentioned in this, in this recommendation. If you go up, Melissa, pull up, then I can see the number. So we have for the next. Right there. So we need one hundred seventy three thousand dollars for each. Each fiscal year moving forward. Hopefully, this will be the plan for next, you know, six years. And um. That's all I have for you. I hope that answered the question.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I am gonna ask for ten more minutes to be added to this item. Cause I saw Melissa's letting us know the time ran out. Council, can you add ten more minutes to the?
I'm moved.
Thank you so much. Alright, uh, so uh, so a couple of things. Uh, can you go back to the screen with the cars, Melissa? Okay, so. I will tell you guys this, speaking and with other mayors and chiefs. We, the delay on cars is a lot. It's typically six months and it could exceed that. And when was this last information provided for the mileage? Can somebody let me know this? Cause I see a hundred and seventy eight thousand plus miles. And I've been seeing this before and I haven't seen an updated number, but. The way I see this, like this car will hit more than two hundred thousand miles before these cars can even get close to us. Okay? So to me, it's, it's important that we make a decision tonight. To move forward with um, with this proposal, so that way they could start ordering because unless you order it, the clock just starts running. And it's very significant for these cars to get fixed because if not, you're gonna be having to approve. Quite a bit of money when it comes to maintenance fixing for all these cars. And at the end, I'd rather spend it. Utilizing it for the fleet that the team needs. Rather than on repairs, trying to um, put on hold, uh, getting these cards. Uh, the other thing is like, um. The green team plan that was given uh, to us a few months ago. Uh, we were told that it was given to the green team over a year ago. And it disstated there was, you know, there was a plan to change cars. So I definitely need to make sure that um. The next time, like I mentioned before, that plans like that don't know where around for a year because had that plan been presented to Mayor Council prior. We have asked the questions to make sure it wasn't the budget and make sure that. It was accounted for because the cars, I mean, they don't get to this mileage at, at this rate, right? Number two, I think we also need to make sure that when we compare um, other people's fleets, we kept into account that we are twenty four seven. Not only nine to twelve or whatever the other cities are, but I know by midnight they finished their. Their round and then the, the county takes over from that point on. That is in all, all accounts. What other people don't also realize that the vehicles for P D. It's very important to remember that that is the officer's office. Okay, they have a computer where they're writing reports, where they're putting information, all that stuff going on. That when the officers talk about downtime, that's what they mean. Imagine going to work. Every day that you go into work and having to bring in your little box of information to your office. And having to like remove it every day as you go out. So that means we will have a lot of downtime between officers changing cars. And reacting to it. And most of the emergencies. I'll tell you this especially, we have been very effective because our, you know, investigative team and our P D team have like jumped quickly. And trying to solve cases. And that's something that previously, um. Those cases will be basically sent to the county and the county, um, we compete against various other cities and various other cases that are very. Severe. So I will say, uh, at least for me, we also need to take in consideration that. I don't wanna be put ourselves one in a position where, one. Our officers are switching between cars and trying to get to an emergency because how do we answer now that we have a quick. Respond rate, Chief, what's the respond rate or any of the lieutenants? What's the respond rate currently? For calls?
Less than three minutes.
Okay, so what will happen if an officer needs to change from one car to the other to that time?
Was me dr- drastically uh, extended. Um. And especially if an officer has a late arrest, as I said earlier, and we have uh, the next crew coming on if. They have to wait for a car to come back from the Department of Corrections to respond, uh, we won't be able to respond.
So that is something that also be taken into account that the vehicles, although they're outside the city, they are doing city work. Which includes transporting individuals to either the hospital when they have made arrests, right? Or um, take them to um, to, 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 um, to, to court or to jail, either one. Officers do also need to move to go to court to testify. Our administrative team also needs to go drop documents to the courts. So this is um, I don't want us to just think of their job as patrolling. It goes above and beyond that. And I also know for a fact that. They have helped various residents in the needs that they have, whether it's like helping some of our seniors. Helping some of our people that are A D As, helping some of our youth. All of that gets involved. So it's just not three cars starting patrol. But if one of those cars hasn't arrested, they're out of it. Somebody else needs to come in and, and help. So please be mindful of that. And I will tell you this. I like our respond rate. I like the fact that our officers have been able to solve cases along with a detective team. And they've been able to have the tools that they needed. And the reason why there's so, so the, the additional cars is because when those cars go to the shop or something happens to them. There is a vehicle in which an officer could go and continue with their job. Because if you're doing doubling up on the cars and one car goes down, now you have two officers down. That cannot do their job, putting us in a position where we might not have what we need. And the other thing is that we've been working with helping with patrolling um, as much as we can with uh, cross guarding the schools. And that has had limitations as well because we don't have enough people to do it. So I will stay on that because I, I told, sorry Luke, I told you not to do that. I did the same thing. But keep in mind all of that and the sooner we are able to, to approve this, the faster they could start moving it. I just don't wanna be here next fall waiting on those three cars and getting ourselves in vast situations.
Yeah, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Um, Valerie, I, I have to say something for the record, Mr. Kamali as well. Um. I, I actually put in for three new vehicles uh, for the budget last March. So um, and that's all I can say. So I did forecast. And uh, but it wasn't able to make it in the budget. So that's where we are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, members of the. Public. Um, let us know if you have a question, please uh, put your name. Um. And last thing, Mary, hopefully that's, that resolves some of the questions you have. Um, and it clear a couple of things, what the vehicles are, are needed and um, and the rotation for them as well.
Mayor, can I move the motion? So we just have the.
So I need to, I need to give at least um.
Well, we're not, we're not voting, I just to move it.
Go ahead, Jimmy.
I'd just like to move the, the motion that was recommendation from the City Manager and Chief. On the replacement of police cars and how it'd be funded.
Second that.
There's been a motion and it's been second. Any discussion? Um.
Yeah, this is.
Go ahead, Luke.
Yeah, I would just, just to clarify a few things. I'm, you know. What I was thinking about from a scheduling perspective was not that we would only have. Two or three cars or only the people here would have cars. It was that you could. Um. Through scheduling, many people would still have cars. Um, you would still have seven to ten, you could have fourteen people who would still have cars. Um, at any given moment. Um, they may not have that car all the time. Um, so just that, you know, I wasn't saying that we should just have two to three cars and, and people wouldn't be able to come. Into the city for emergencies, but I appreciate um, what everyone was able to provide. Um. Uh. Both M R P D and Mayor. Um, um, so I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Luke. Um, Jimmy?
What, what is the question, Mayor?
If you have, just uh, the minute we open the floor for.
No, I, I have nothing else to add.
Anything. Okay, Valerie?
I think I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, we do have um, a comment from the public. I, I would tell you this, like had that cars made it to the budget, we wouldn't be where we're at. Those cars would have been ordered probably here by now. Um, we do need to take into account that P D cars are not cars, we could just go to a lot and pick them up. They have to be retrofitted and they have to, um, and they take some time and those trips as we're continuing going towards a green initiatives. It's taking longer. So my concern is like not just the traditional six months that they might take to get here. But in some cases, people have been waiting, um, they've been given estimate of over a year to, to wait for those vehicles. And we are not even in the list. This is people that are already in the list that have been giving those, those amounts. So I need to make sure we are. Uh, definitely addressing situations a lot better. So I'll go ahead and uh, we do have a person that would like to make a comment. Shivali Shah, uh, go ahead. The floor is yours. Three minutes.
Hi, thank you. Um, this is Shivali Shah on the forty two hundred block of Thirty First Street. Um, I just wanna, um, uh, you know, I. Luke's point uh, resonates with me in terms of an efficiency standpoint with, in terms of having fewer cars, but on the other hand. You know, from the perspective of. Um, attracting uh, talented officers and retaining them. Um, having these take home cars for, you know, for. For all the people that are entitled to them in the police department is an important perk that. Larger police departments already offer. And if we wanna keep the, you know, the officers that we're training and. Uh, keep them long term, then we need to be able to match as much as we can with our modest budget. The perks that larger police departments have. I know that just generally, um. It's difficult with, when it, you know, we're smaller staff, smaller city. it's difficult with when it, you know, we're smaller staff, smaller cities, smaller staff in all the departments to retain the talent that we've grown here, that we've attracted here and wanna keep them as long as we can. And this is a very standard perk, uh having a take-home car in other police departments. So that's that's another reason to keep, keep it at the current level. Thank you.
Thank you, Shivali Council. We are tamaki. You guys give it at least two more minutes so we can actually take a vote.
So moved, we had two minutes.
Thank you so much, Jimmy. Two minutes. Anybody else from the um from the public that would like to make a comment, please let me know. And Jared, in the meantime, anything on Facebook? Thank you so much. Okay, um seeing nothing on Facebook and nothing else on the chat, um I think we have, we need to go up for a vote now. Um, all right, so Jimmy? You had a motion in the floor, so um all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those oppose? All those abstaining?
Aye.
So you look, you're opposing or abstaining?
Abstaining.
All right, that's fine. All right, so it passes at three zero one. Thank you so much. So Mr. Kamali, um you have your marching orders. Uh let us know if you need anything from us, okay? Um and lieutenants, chief, thank you so much as long, as well as the whole entire police department for everything you guys do. And congratulations on a very successful shop with a cop, uh the first one that we've had in the city. Um all the community work they do is is um very well, I love and respect, and we appreciate you guys for that as well, aside from all your other duties that you do. So thank you, guys. And have a have a great night.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
All right, moving on to item number twelve. Discussion and vote on holiday bonus for city staff. The mayor, uh fifty minutes, the mayor and council will have a discussion and vote on the city, on the holiday bonus for the city staff. Yeah. And Melissa, can you do me a favor for the future? Yeah, make
I haven't heard of joy. I haven't.
Can you guys mute everybody, please? Thank you, guys. I think only Jimmy's mic is now open, but he wasn't talking, so we're good. Um, okay, so moving on to a discussion about a holiday bonus for the city staff. Can you pull the ordinance, Melissa? Or Mr. Kamali, what's your presentation?
No, I'm sorry that uh item was requested by you to be put on the agenda, but I can talk about it because uh I've received some requests from employees, so I'll be glad to inform Mayor and Council.
So every year, Mayor and Council put a uh put this item on the agenda. The city manager puts a resolution forward, letting us know what is the proposal bonus for the city staff. And that's what I asked for this item to be on it, but I also requested for an ordinance to be put forward. And if there was anything that was needed for me to let me know, I was never contacted to say there was no resolution they could find in any record. So I uh a okay, um council can ask for we, for us to go ahead and postpone this one and can we address it for the work session, please?
Well, Mayor?
The amount?
Mayor, may I suggest that it's enable that we have a special legislative meeting before the work session to vote on it?
Yeah.
So we don't delay until after the course of the year. So if we could ask the uh the city manager to prepare the appropriate ordinance, then we could have a short legislative meeting before a work session and vote on it and get that done.
That's what I was requesting, Jimmy.
Okay, well, I was, well, you you were just saying we discussed at a work session and then we'd have to have an legislative session after that. So I'm just suggesting, okay. But we're on the same page.
Perfect. Um Luke, Valerie, anything?
That sounds fine to me. Thank you.
I like that plan. Thanks.
Perfect. So Mr. Kamali, uh can you um or Melissa, can you guys check through the records to figure out what the resolution is? But we need to know the amount and how much is it so that way the funding is allocated, okay? And if you need help, uh Luke, can you double check on your emails? I'll check on mine if we find anything, but it should be straightforward also as the list. So so it's basically an order says ordinance, whatever it is, employee bonuses, um you know, A and B, and this is what it's gonna ta- uh tally up. So that way um we um we know what it is. And um and then for this one, um so we can move forward with it, okay? All right, so moving on to item number thirteen. Vote on approval of minutes. The mayor and council vote on approval of the minutes for May fourth, twenty twenty-one legislative meeting, October eighteen, twenty twenty-two work session, November first, twenty twenty-two legislative meeting. And this um three minutes were provided to us by the city clerk on our maybe work session and legislative sessions passed. So we've had like whether a month or more than three weeks to review them. Correct, Melissa?
Yes, ma'am.
So um council, do I have a motion on the floor to approve the minutes as submitted?
I move to prove, uh prove
So moved, so moved.
To approve the minutes as submitted. Thank you, Valerie. So moved by Jimmy. All right, any discussion? Just thank you, Melissa, Gabby, um for working on this. That's my discussion. I, you guys are getting us right on track and you guys have been very on it. So thank you so much. All right, um any abstentions? Objections? Hearing no abstentions or uh objections, this um three minutes have been approved. All right, Melissa, I did my do- my due diligence. All right, item number fourteen, adjournment?
So moved.
Seconded.
Wow, you guys took a while on this one. Is it probably moving second? Any discussion?
No, actually, there's no discussion, motion to adjourn, but anyway.
I have always asked for a discussion. I don't know, you might wanna say one final thing.
Not a a a motion to adjournment, I'm pretty sure there's no discussion, but anyway, but it's whatever.
Like, it's just standard that we do that discussion. And usually, well, that's where you guys have like a last minute, like a a announcement. Any objections, abstentions? Hearing none, none, uh this meeting is uh called to an end at nine thirty-three PM. Thank you, uh staff, uh for being, thank you, residents. Congratulations to the Police Advisory Board for being um for being elected. I do see our grand writer, uh Bill here as well. Thank you, Bill. Um and Jared, Melissa, Pink, uh Mr. Kamali, thank you all for doing a great work and um we'll see you guys soon. And don't forget this Saturday, breakfast with Santa. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you, staff.
Thank you, Mayor and Council and the staff. Thank you.